Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for October 8, 2013. It's my pleasure to ask Bishop Nathaniel Wells, Jr., forward to lead us in prayer, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Bishop Wells?
I'm not Bishop.
Okay. Up at the podium. And my apologies, I wasn't paying too much attention.
My name is Elder Holmes, Elder Riddell Holmes. I'm my associate minister at Holy Trinity Church of God in Christ.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Elder Holmes.
My pleasure.
And again, our pleasure and our honor.
Thank you. Let us all bow our heads. Our heavenly Father, Lord God, we come today in the name of Jesus to say thank you. We thank you, Lord, for your grace and your mercy. We thank you for your loving kindness. Now, Father, we ask that you will look upon the city of Muskegon, look upon the leadership in this city. We pray, oh, God, that you will protect the leadership in the police department, fire department, as they protect the community. We ask, oh, God, that you would just keep them safe as they perform their job duties. We ask, oh, God, that you would look upon the community right now. We ask, Father, that you would bless our children, bless our communities, our parents, and bless our schools, all the auxiliaries throughout this community. We thank you in these prayers. We ask in our son, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you, Elder. May we have the roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Here.
Commissioner German.
Here.
Commissioner Wieringel.
Absent.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Here.
Commissioner Markowski.
Here.
Mayor Goulburn.
Here.
Commissioner Hood.
Here.
Thank you. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request, to approve minutes of the September 24th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Policy change to policy for sale of city-owned residential property, planning economic development. Summary request, to approve the changes to the policy for sale of city-owned residential property to remove the reference of the Land Reutilization Committee, LRC, from the policy on pages three and fours, as the committee no longer exists, plus the removal of whether appealed or not on page four. Staff recommendation, to approve the resolution and to authorize both the mayor and the clerk to sign said resolution. Sale of the property at 1035 East Lakeston Avenue, planning economic development. Summary request, staff is seeking approval to sell the vacant buildable industrial zone lot at 1035 East Lakeston to New Kirk Electric at 1875 Roberts Street. The property is 2.6 acres and has 116 feet of frontage on Lakeston Avenue. The company will utilize this space for storage, and it will allow them to combine with their other property at 1975 Vulcan Street. Staff recommendation, approval and signature of the purchase agreement, resolution, and deed. Approval of building contract for 2169 Hudson, Community Neighborhood Services. Summary request, to award the building contract for the construction of a new home located at 2169 Hudson Street to hold in construction in the amount of $112,800 for the City of Muskegon home buyers programmed through CNS. CNS received three bids, and the cost estimate from our spec writer was $140,300. Staff recommendation, to award Hold in Construction, the contract for the construction of 2169 Hudson Street, in the amount of $112,800 for the Community and Neighborhood Services Department. Community Relations Committee, City Clerk, summary request, to accept the recommendations from the Community Relations Committee made at the meeting held on October 7, 2013, as follows. Accept the resignations of Lee Ann Miccell and William Parker from the Planning Commission. Accept appointments of Brian Mize to the Board of Review as citizen, Kim Burr to the Citizens District Council Commission as citizen representing Ward III, Kim Burr to the local Development Finance Authority as citizen interested in the district, Burge Jackson to the Local Officers Compensation Commission as citizen, and Brian Mize and Steve Wisnewski to the Planning Commission as citizens. Accept the removal of Lori Rasmussen from the Citizens District Council. Staff recommendation, to concur with the Community Relations Committee recommendations.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have heard the consent agenda. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? If not, we'll entertain a motion, please. Commissioner Hood?
I motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second?
It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner German, to accept the consent agenda as read. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Goulburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. New business, item A, please.
Police Cruisers Public Works, summary request, to rescind your authorization for staff to purchase the six Chevy Capri Cruisers from Betten Chevrolet for $167,316, which was granted on September 24, 2013. Betten notified staff on September 30 that a mistake was made when submitting the bid using a 2013 module rather than the 2014 requested. Betten's revised figures on the 2014 Capri is $169,316, an increase of $2,000. Furthermore, it is requested that staff be authorized to purchase the six Cruisers from Shaheen Chevy, the state dealer who submitted the low bid of $166,608 originally, which he is willing to honor. Staff recommendation, rescind prior authorization of September 24, 2013, and authorize staff to purchase the six Cruisers from Shaheen instead for $166,608.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we rescind the prior authorization of September 24, 2013, and authorize staff to purchase the six Cruisers from Shaheen instead for a total cost of $166,608.
Second?
It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Markowski, to rescind the prior authorization of September 24, 2013, and authorize staff to purchase the six Cruisers from Shaheen instead for $166,608. Good evening, Mr. El Chatelle.
Good evening to all. I'm afraid we're, I don't know how to approach this, but there's one more furthermore, I guess.
Oh.
We were notified as of 10 o'clock this morning, 10:30 this morning, that Shaheen is no longer willing to honor those prices, and he is no longer the state dealer, and gave us the name of Berger Chevrolet as the state dealer, so we contacted them, and they are willing to honor those prices that Shaheen had submitted to us before. So if you guys would consider a revised recommendation, we would ask that you, our recommendation would be to authorize staff to purchase those six Cruisers from Berger Chevrolet in Grand Rapids instead.
Would you be amenable to amend?
Well, this may be a question for the manager and the attorney, but this, you know, somebody has an error on their bid, and they corrected upwards, and they're no longer the low bid. That's kind of one thing, but, you know, this is not an entity that we actually requested a bid from. Unless it's cost prohibitive, I would, at this point, think we would be better served by rebidding this. Or is that?
Yeah, it's not inappropriate, but I don't know the timeframe or if that's a problem from a management perspective.
If, I can, what we have done also to ensure that we're doing the right thing here and we're not misleading anybody, I had a meeting with Betten Chevrolet at roughly 12 o'clock this afternoon to discuss the outcome of this whole thing, and they were amenable, they were accepting what I'm recommending to you, simply because even with the $2,000 that they have suggested to increase, they're still losing money. I believe they added the $2,000 to save face with the community and make sure that we're not looking at them as, as not a proper channel to seek or solicit bids from them, and I assured them that would not be the case. So I made another call to them at 12:15 PM this afternoon, and I asked him a question point-blank. Would you have any problems if we go with Berger Chevrolet, and would that save you money? And the answer was yes. Actually, we're, I don't want to say we're doing them a favor, but we're making sure that they're not losing money either.
And Berger is now the designated state?
State, yes, sir.
What's your motion?
Well, this is more of a parliamentary thing. Would it be more appropriate to withdraw the motion?
Probably.
Or to amend it?
Why don't we withdraw it? It's cleaner.
I would withdraw my motion, then.
And would you withdraw your second, then, Commissioner Markowski? Okay. We need to vote, I know. No? No? Okay.
I would motion that we approve the bid as submitted by Berger Chevrolet.
Yes, ma'am.
In Grand Rapids, as they are the current state dealer and are the low bidder at this point.
Second?
It has been moved by Commissioner Markowski, seconded by Commissioner Hood to accept the bid as proposed by Berger Chevrolet, the new state dealer. Does that cover that? Okay. Yes, sir. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Goulburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, please.
Water and sewer connections fees for farmer's market city manager. Summary request, to waive the water and sewer connection fee and water meter costs for the new farmer's markets. Staff recommendation, none.
Mr. Turnquist?
I would move that we waive the water and sewer connection fees and water meters costs at the farmer's market to show that we fully support what they're doing and that we want to be their partner.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
It has been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to waive the water and sewer connection fees and water meter costs for the new farmer's market. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Goulburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, please.
City Commission to Petition LCC to Revoke Elk's Club License, Public Safety. Summary request, the Director of Public Safety requests that the City Commission review and consider petitioning the Michigan Liquor Controls Commission to revoke, suspend, or amend the Elk's Charity Lodge Club liquor license through a hearing process. The Elk's Charity Lodge has been involved in many violent incidents over the past several years, with the last being a mass shooting incident that claimed the lives of three individuals and wounded four others. Other serious weapon offenses, shootings have occurred at this location over the summer, which has led to the temporary closing of this establishment. The Muskegon Police have been summoned to the lodge countless times, investigated and compiled a list of complaints, crimes for the commission to review. In addition to the calls for service, police LCC investigators have noted numerous administrative violations that have and are occurring at the lodge contrary to Michigan administrative law that governs alcohol establishments. I have outlined the criminal events and business practices that have led to this important request. Staff recommendation, to notify the Liquor Control Commission to maintain the emergency suspension order until notice is provided and a hearing is held before the Liquor Control Commission to suspend, revoke, or amend the liquor license held by Charity Lodge Number 1397 of IBPOE of W, and appoint Robert Chessman as a hearing officer to take testimony and make a recommendation to the City Commission as to whether the City Commission should recommend to the Liquor Control Commission to revoke, suspend, or amend the liquor license held by Charity Lodge Number 1398 of IBPOE of W.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we notify the Liquor Control Commission to maintain the emergency suspension order until notice is provided and a hearing is held before the Liquor Control Commission to suspend, revoke, or amend the liquor license held by Charity Lodge Number 1397 of IBPOE of W, and appoint Robert Chessman as a hearing officer to take testimony and make a recommendation to the City Commission as to whether the City Commission should recommend to the Liquor Control Commission to revoke, suspend, or amend the liquor license held by Charity Lodge Number 1398 of IBPOE of W.
Do I have a second? It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Hood, to notify the Liquor Control Commission to maintain the emergency suspension order until notice is provided and a hearing is held before the Liquor Control Commission to suspend, revoke, or amend the liquor license held by Charity Lodge Number 1397 of IBPOE of W, and appoint Robert Chessman as a hearing officer to take testimony and make a recommendation to the City Commission as to whether the City Commission should recommend to the Liquor Control Commission to revoke, suspend, or amend the liquor license held by Charity Lodge Number 1398 of IBPOE of W. Comments or discussion? Vice Mayor?
I just want to say this. I know that this is a very longstanding institution within our community, and I know that because of what's occurred, particularly recently, that there's a lot of emotion involved. And after our discussion yesterday and reflection overnight, I really think it's in everybody's best interest to have a neutral, dispassionate, third-party fact-find, collect evidence, take testimony, and provide that evidence to this body so that we can make a reasoned recommendation to the State Liquor Control Commission. I think that's fair to all involved. Whatever the results may be, I'm prepared to live with. And so that's why I made the motion, and I'm going to support it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Markowski?
I did request, and if I received it via email, I apologize, I missed it.
No, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I was just requesting budget information as for a similar situation with the Spotlight nightclub, and we had used a similar process, and so I had asked our representative to give us what the budget was for our legal fees.
Mr. Mayor?
Please. I apologize, Commissioner, I was out of town all day. Mr. Chessman's fees on the hotspot was just over $5,000. We also incurred expenses of about $600 in transcription, so you're at between $5,000 and $6,000 total.
And a point of clarification, would Mr. Shire, our representative, be there either way? Either for our, a hearing before us or a hearing before Mr. Chessman?
I will, I or someone from our office would present the case on behalf of the Police Department.
Okay.
Mr. Turnquist?
Originally, a petition was brought forward to us by our police chief, and I mentioned the number has a history of violent incidents and repeated. I'm just wondering where you stand on that today? Have you had a change of mind? Do you still feel that the lodge should be closed down?
Good evening. You know, I stand by the staff recommendation at this time, that I feel that the information we have should go in front of a hearing person, a neutral hearing person. At that time, that decision should be made. I feel that, you know, I represent the city, I have access to all the information, and I have access to the investigation that's currently going on, that we are, you know, keeping under wraps at this time because it's still an investigation. So I think the best way to handle this is to go through a hearing process, and that information will come out at that time. And, you know, as the Public Safety Director, whatever is decided at that hearing, I support that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Commissioner?
Just a question of procedure. Are commission members able to attend such hearing if we are not the ones conducting it?
Yes. It is an open, it's open to anyone. It's just like a trial.
Mr. Turnquist?
I have a hard time whenever something happens that it's never the perpetrator's fault, it's someone else's fault, and we don't do this, we don't do that. And I think in many cases, that may be right. But I think our reputation, and I'm willing to go along with the chief, but I still feel opposed to this in my own mind, that, you know, we're looking at a, we had a report come out from Chief Lewis, and total arrests year-to-date, 4,442 against 3,386 at the same time a year ago. We have a problem, and I think we need to be tough. Wrong is wrong, but I will probably still vote against this, but I agree with the chief's conclusion that it would probably be best to have an arbitrator and go through this process.
Commissioner Hood?
I agree with the process because I don't think that we should, this should come in front of us for hastily, hasty judgment. I mean, we need to know all the facts of what happened, what's been happening, what's been going on. And I think, and I too agree that the Elks is a longstanding organization in the city of Muskegon, not just the city, in the country, and they do good things at times for the city. And so I would prefer the hearing, and everything comes out, and then we can bring it back to us for the vote. And I also would like to say that my prayers go out to the families that lost loved ones that night, and for the families that lost loved ones for the whole year, that's what's been going on. And I just hope that, you know, we don't have this type of violent incident again.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, but do recall, Commissioners, that through this process, the requirement is that a hearing is held in order to garner the information that's part of the process prior to being able to make a recommendation to the LLC. So we're following state procedures. Commissioner?
I have just one question. I read that, is the Charity Lodge still a part of the Elks organization, or is it not?
Repeat that question.
Is the Charity Lodge still officially recognized as part of the Elks organization?
I'll tell you what I know about it, and the city attorney can follow up with that. You know, part of the business registration asks questions that are, that pertain to that. We are looking into seeing what their current charitable status is at this time. We're also looking into the affiliations they have with the Elks at this time, but I'm not prepared to, tonight, to say affirmatively if they are or are not. But in the very near future, we're going to have that information, and we're going to forward that to the clerk at some point, very soon. And I believe it's going to run parallel with this hearing, we're going to challenge their business registration at this time. And that information, from our standpoint, will be forwarded to be challenged by the lodge at that time.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And I know Commissioner German's got a hand in it, too. So I'll defer to Commissioner German. I just spoke to him.
No. Thank you.
Please.
Vice Mayor. I feel pretty comfortable also with the process that Chief Lewis has taken charge of, and again, my condolences go out to the families that lost their loved ones. You know, with this investigation, far as what I've read, there's still a lot of unanswered questions, and I really strongly feel that someone has to be held accountable. I believe in accountability, and I'm quite sure that the city will do the best that they can to resolve these issues. But, you know, I do want to say one thing, this lodge has done some great things in the community and has not always had this type of behavior. I've been in the city over 30 years as a high school graduate from Muskegon High School, and attended times there where, you know, it was a lot different, and you didn't have this type of violence. And, you know, suspending, you know, the license at this point in time, I think, is okay until we find out really what happened, because we don't really need any more of this type of violence or behavior, because we done lost three, you know, young, you know, children. And I just want to say, you know, whatever happens, you know, I think it'd be in the best interest of this community and saving lives, but we definitely need to get these guns off the streets, you know, find something for the youth to do, because the big issue in the bigger picture is the Elks, you know, is not the person, the organization that, you know, shot or killed someone. So it's a bigger and broader issue here, but the thing is, this violence can't continue, and we have to come together as a community and work together, and the leadership that we have up here in my share, we all feel the same way, that we want a safer, you know, environment and a better environment for all of us and our children to live in. So that's my take on that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I'll say.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Goulburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
No.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Allow due process to proceed. Any other business? I have one thing. I received a card addressed to the Muskegon City Commission, and it is written in what we have come to appreciate in the flowery and eloquent tone of our former city manager. City Commission, so grateful for your generosity. Thank you for the gift card. I will put it to good use. Any other items, Commissioners? If not, we'll take public comment. I do have a request from Kathy Olson and Jeff Worrell regarding towing contract. If you'd like to come forward, name and address, please, and you can make your comments.
Okay. I'm Kathy Olson with Reliable Towing, and I'll give you the business address. It's 1288 Ninth Street. We're about a mile away from here.
Okay, thank you.
Anyways, with the upcoming towing bid, I'm here to ask you to consider the city's towing companies, those of us located right here in the city of Muskegon. We feel we should have first priority over the other towing companies. There's three of us, Reliable Towing, Campbell Towing, and Central Towing, and I just found out that Campbell's didn't submit a bid, so, anyways, two of us. We all pay city property tax, corporate tax, and our employees pay city income tax. In the past, it was a requirement to be located in the city of Muskegon. In fact, it's even stated in the specs that preference will be given to those companies who are in or near the corporate limits of the city of Muskegon. Another thing that we would like you to be aware of is the fact that in the bid specs for the towing contract, it states that you must own a large, heavy-duty wrecker capable of handling trucks, trailers, and other large vehicles up to a gross weight of 50 tons. Your current towor doesn't have, nor has he ever had, a heavy-duty wrecker. He contracts those calls out to Baxter's Towing. And also, Mr. Ramos is a deputy with the Muskegon County Sheriff's Department, which is, in our opinion, a definite conflict of interest with this contract. With respect to our own towing company, Reliable Towing, we're located at 1288 Ninth Street, approximately one mile from City Hall and the Police Department, which makes it pretty easy when you've got somebody that gets their car impounded. We've been in business at this location since 1985. We're local, we're in the city of Muskegon, and that should be an important factor in your decision. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and now Jeff Worrell's going to talk.
Evening, Mr. Worrell.
Evening. My name's Jeff Worrell, manager of Reliable Towing, 1288 Ninth Street. I just have a couple of facts I need to bring up about the contract. The cost, the previous contracts have usually gone with the lowest bidder for who they chose for their, for the towing contract. The cost for impounds in the city of Muskegon is the lowest they are in the surrounding areas. The county sheriff's department that we tow for, you know, were anywhere from $75 to $100, depending on where it's at. You know, the contract here for the city has averaged anywhere from 45 to the current price of 55. That is the current rate that has been in standard since '02, when we originally bid on the last contract and was awarded it. The cost of our equipment has not gone down, the cost of The cost of our equipment has not gone down, the cost of insurance has not gone down, fuel has tripled. And basically, the clients that get their vehicles impounded for criminal actions or not being legal are basically getting a slap on the hands. So going necessarily with the lowest bidder is not the best, okay? Another thing I have to bring up, too, is on the sitting, on the city contract, the towing of the city trucks. I know the other companies, a lot of them put down no charge. We put down a minimal charge, because when that truck is on our, in our possession, we are responsible for it. If something happens, it's not going to fall back on the city, it's going to fall on us. So, you know, we've got to pay the insurance. So towing them for free, yeah, it does get into the city's budget, minimal, for the prices. I mean, because when we had it, '02 to '05, we were charging, I believe it was $50. The last time we submitted the bid for the contract, everybody went in zero across the board. You know, changing tires on the police cruisers, towing to the city yard, yeah, we can do that for a minimal charge, or actually do it for no charge, compared to with the bigger equipment, you know, there is more liability there. Another thing, your current tower has, I've got proof that on vehicles that have been held for investigation by the Police Department have, he's not doing it for the contracted rate of storage for $15 a day, which is what he's currently at. I've got an invoice right here in front of me where he charged $30. And I feel that he's gotten away with it. Nobody's done any audits on him. It should be brought to the attention of the City Commission, that maybe an audit that should be addressed into his, the vehicles that have been impounded by the city. Because I had another incident where my cousin's daughter was killed in a traffic accident on the end of the causeway. Her vehicle was taken back to Ramos for, impounded for the investigation. When it was released, they went down to get the vehicle, and he had charged nothing with what was on the city contract for impounds. So that's, they contacted me, I told them how to take, go about it, they got with the city, got the impound release, went to get the vehicle, had this absorbent bill, went back, and called me. I said, no, called the city, Police Department, they called the city Police Department, Police Department looked into it, they ended up getting the vehicle back for free. Now, the only reason that happened is because I was able to step in and help them. How many people out there has he done this to that haven't caught it? So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
We did the bill on the lowest bid, lowest bid this year, I mean, for the, for the contract?
Prior. Now, remember, we've only authorized an extension not to exceed a year pending bids.
Going out for bids.
Going out for bids.
Okay.
Okay. So the bidding process will be occurring.
Lowest bid again.
Correct.
Okay. And just to throw in some, because I know a lot of, a lot of people, I get a lot of calls sometimes when people get their cars impounded or whatnot, what should they do, this and that. So I do know that, I know that the gentleman said that Ramos charges too much money for storage fees.
He's not following the contract.
And it's not following the contract. But I also know that people have come to him, and he has worked it out with him also. I know that sometimes he has dropped some of the fees, the excess of fees, not fees that is mandatory, but some of his fees. So I just wanted to just throw that out there also.
But with this, with this information, the individual is responsible for evaluating and going through this process will certainly take it under consideration as we proceed.
Just as a reminder on our policy on bidding, it's the lowest responsible bidder, so certainly I would expect staff to give us a report on have there been problems with this contract, and is there the capacity of any provider to do what they're asking to do. The other issue is, is that normally we get the location of the businesses, and when we're dealing with in-city limit businesses opposed to outside-the-city-limit businesses, we have in the past allowed a local preference of 1% or, I believe, $1,500, whichever is less. So there are some options available there. So, I mean, we have to clarify who's actually in the city and who's not, since a good chunk of Muskegon County has a Muskegon post office for their mailing address. That doesn't necessarily, necessarily tell you where the facility is or where they're located. So I would assume that that kind of information would be brought forward when we're asked to make a decision on the, on the bids.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission, sir? If you'd step forward and please give your name and address, please. And each speaker is allotted three minutes.
I actually came to see the Elks thing, but this intrigued me, in what you were talking about with the...
Oh, we need your name and address.
Oh, Jeff Card, 6315 South Walker.
Go ahead, please.
You were saying that Ramos, when it was brought to him, that he adjusted fees, when it was brought to his attention by the people that were getting the bills, that he adjusted the fees? And that he made right by that? Is that what you...
No, that's not what I said.
Oh, okay. I was just trying to clarify, because that's what I heard.
Okay.
What did, what did you say?
I said that they, when he, they, he worked with them.
He worked with them?
Yes.
All right. After he went in, or they went in there and saw that the fees were exorbitant?
Well, I didn't say that either.
Okay. After the fees were high, he worked with them to try to help lower the fees?
I said he worked with them, and on occasions, I think that he set up payment arrangements for them, you know, so, yeah.
Okay. Okay. I was just wondering, so like, I guess if I don't follow the rules, but I help other people along the way, then that would be okay? I mean, if, if he put the bid in and said that he was going to...
That's, that's all speculative stuff, and...
Well, I'm saying, if he put the bid in for $15 a day as storage, and he's charging 30, is what this guy has on his paper, is that okay because he helps out other people or, you know, makes payment arrangements as long as he gets his money, or what?
That we won't speak to, because we don't have actual...
The man has a paper right there. You want it?
No.
I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure this out.
That information will come through.
But I heard him just step up for Officer Ramos, or Ramos, Ramos Towing, and what I heard was, it's, it's okay because he helps out other people, as long as he's still breaking the rules that he had previously agreed.
I don't know about, I don't know about any...
Allegedly, he's still allegedly breaking the rules that he agreed to.
Again, all allegations, we cannot speak to that at this point up here, because we don't have the proofs, and the staff that are responsible for that will have to make that investigation.
So you are going to investigate this allegation, or maybe you guys are going to look into this?
The information is being taken under consideration by the responsible staff.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to know.
I just want...
I wanted to clarify what you had said, because it sounded like you had made...
We, we, we can't, we can't get into speculations and make any type of statements.
No, but you can investigate it, right?
Certainly.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission? If not, Commissioner...
I did ask a question. This was presented to us by some other parties a couple of meetings ago, or meeting, and we gave them an extension not to exceed one year.
Right.
So that means that this whole process is being reviewed by our staff as we speak.
We're going into the bidding process for a new contract.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hood?
There's nothing else, I, motion to adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? If not, good night.
Right. Have a good night. Very good.